Can you hear us by the way?
People can't hear, I'll use a mic.
Well, I have a mic. What instructional or other approaches would you support to eliminate the achievement gap?
I think that we need to look all over the country and see what is going on in that regard. But things I can think of, things that I'm aware of going on in our system are before-school and after-school tutoring, using data to identify what children need intervention. Before-school and after-school tutoring is more time in the classroom. And also extracting from the data what the specific needs of different children are. Again, getting away from a one-size-fits-all approach, but looking at which children are having trouble, which children are scoring below the requirements of the Connecticut Mastery Test, and then spending more time with them in the classroom. If it means additional time during the school day, that's helpful. I know at some of the schools there is before-school tutoring and a class of after-school tutoring. So those are the instructional approaches that I can think of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you. The -- I make it more difficult for everyone. Where we can really affect change is by, as Dr. Starr used to say, what data really does for you when you see the data is it helps you to ask more questions. Because the children aren't numbers. The children are individuals who need specific help. At the level that we see the data, while it may be disaggregated along the NCOB lines, it is not disaggregated along the student line. But the data that the educators are looking at is student by student by student. And that's what we expect our educators to do. And we've gotten much better at actually looking at data on a student-by-student basis. We have, and to pay for, in part because of the generosity of GE and their almost $26 million grant to us, we have purchased systems such as Read 180 and Systems 44. These are support programs for children who are struggling. It says in the development that the best practice model is that the children should be instructed up to 90 minutes, depending on the age, depending on the challenge that the child faces, depending on the program, up to 90 minutes a week. When we look at the data, we're seeing in the aggregate that some of these kids are getting 15, 20 minutes a week. And that is where the board can affect change. We can ask the board, we can ask to look at that data on a monthly basis and make sure we see those numbers going up.
Ms. Murphy?
Sorry. Thank you. I think the way to improve our achievement gap is to put the responsibility down to the principals. The principals know the best. So each principal and his teaching staff would be held accountable. The superintendent would set ambitious goals, you know, for achievement. For example, I like to see 90% of these students reading at goal after the second year or third year of this term of this contract. I am also a strong advocate of intervention, and that's why I like ability working with flexibility, is students who cannot read have to begin in that intervention, even if it means, you know, not participating in a science class or a social studies class. If the student can't read, I don't see how we could possibly pass a social studies class and participate with the other students. I would also like to see some digital learning. I believe some of our students will use the computer to go to classrooms in other states and other countries even. But my primary goal right now would be intervention to make sure our students are reading at grade. If you look at our fifth graders right now, we have less than 50%, 48% are reading at goal. That is totally unacceptable. And to put that, fifth grader has now been to this middle school reform, it would almost be criminal in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Since I am not an educator, I would be supporting any programs that the superintendent and his staff recommend to the board. A thing that we have to remember, and we have to keep reminding ourselves, is there is a difference in opinion out there in the public as to what the role of the Board of Education members is. Our primary goal should be to accept a plan, approve a plan, and then hold the superintendent and his staff responsible for meeting the goals that are set in the plan. Each school has an improvement plan in place that's approved every year. The Board of Education members look at the reports, look at the plan, and then we ask or should be asking on a regular basis to the superintendent and his staff, are you meeting your goal? And if you're not, what is the plan? That's our role. We're not the educators. For us to be recommending and approving or thinking of improved plans is not reality. It's just not what a Board of Education should be spending their time doing. We need to be monitoring what the plans in place are and making sure that the interventions that are proposed for all students are in place and that the programs that are going to support high-level learning are actually being delivered to the students.
Thank you, Ms. Starr.
I'm also in favor of intervention. I really believe we have the basis started, our foundation, and if you're teaching to the skills so that the children become proficient at core standards, then that should be the correct direction. Just providing the intervention because a lot of our children cannot read. And if you can't read at grade level, you can't pass the Connecticut Mastery Test. The other thing is, I feel that we're playing catch-up now. We're trying to catch these children up who could not read at grade level. And I think we're in the right direction, we're going in the right direction, and we're going to see that start to happen in a short period of time maybe. But I think we need to also address the preschool, and we need to get as many children in the preschool. And it needs to really be provided through so that everyone can take advantage of it and we can get the children up to speed before they enter kindergarten so we don't continue to play catch-up.
Okay. Is there further comments on that? I figured you had. All right, let's start all over again. Thirty seconds.
Sure. I just want to respond to something Ms. Heffman said. I agree with her that we're not educators and we're not the ones who designed the intervention process. Where I don't agree with her is this, the very passive verb, monitor. I don't believe the board's job is to monitor. That sounds like you're sitting in a chair and observing. The board's job is to set broad policies, and if the policies aren't working, to change them. If the policies are working in some schools, to hold other schools accountable, and to constantly be looking at things, revising, and holding everybody's feet to the fire to produce the best education for our kids, not to monitor.
Okay, is there anyone else? No. Ms. White, you have your question?
It's on the floor.
Okay.
Thank you. You know, and I definitely disagree as well with that monitoring concept. The board has overall oversight responsibility. The superintendent is not a god. I mean, he can make mistakes as well in making his recommendations. The board has to look and receive advice from outside advisors, from other people they expect to rely on. So the board cannot delegate its decision-making authority to any party. You know, they have to become educated, informed on the issues, and then make the decision. Thank you.
Do you wish to comment? Or no?
I do. I'm sorry that some people see monitor as a passive word. For me, it is not a passive word. It denotes an action on the part of the Board of Education, which is of the utmost importance. We have the ability to hire and fire the superintendent. We do not have the ability to hire and fire teachers. We have one employee on the Board of Education, and that's the superintendent of schools. He is the person, he or she is the person who we can hold responsible, just as the corporations who hold the president of the corporation responsible.
Thank you. Ms. Starr, should you wish to comment?
No.
All right. We're going to ask a question slightly different. Ms. White, it's to you. How do you define success in the Stanford Public Schools? Pretty much continuation of the previous question.
I don't define success the way that the NCOB defines success, which is a punitive action. So what we see with NCOB requirements is a school that is improving, meaning a greater number of kids achieving at proficient or goal, fewer number of kids at basic or below basic. But if in fact all of the NCOB groups, NCOB groups don't achieve at a level set by federal standards, then we have a school that is labeled failing because there is a subgroup that hasn't made the appropriate gains. I think that's a really dangerous way for educators and for school districts to operate. Connecticut is one of the states that can, should it choose, request a waiver from the federal government on its NCOB group, NCOB requirements, which only mean, doesn't mean that we aren't meant to stick to the same goals, but in fact we can reevaluate the way that we get there and reassess the way that we get there. So I define success as a school that is moving in the right direction, that is increasing its trajectory of the number of kids achieving at high levels, decreasing the number of kids at below basic, and closing the gap in between.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. One test of success will be under the new sweeping law that came in place in 2010 that our high school students will not need the remedial services needed to graduate. So that will be a test for all the students we have who have not yet attended. That'd be one test. Another test that I would have is for the next two years, a dramatic increase in our reading ability and our math abilities of our lower levels of students in elementary and middle schools. There'd be two funnel tests that I would have immediately going forward. I don't, I mean, I'm not worried about, you know, no child left behind, you know, what they necessarily have to say, but I do believe we do have to, you know, watch and make sure our children are learning. And I don't see how they could be learning if they're not reading at goal and they're not performing at that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heffman.
Our mission statement for the Stanford Public Schools is that each and every child will be prepared for higher education and success in the 21st century. And when we can say that, I will have considered us successful.
I believe that if we can get our children reading at grade level, at least at grade level or higher, I think we will see success. I think we have to make sure that the reading scores are going up, their levels are rising, and then in turn, I think it will automatically start to raise the CMT scores and at the end, just the whole district going in an upward direction. And that's what we need to do.
Yeah, yes, I want to see how things look in terms of the data from that high level, no child left behind, and all these statewide statistics. And I want to see the achievement gap go to zero. Those are both key measures of success. But I also think there's some, another way that I measure success. One of the ways I do it is I take my daughter to school at West Hill every morning, and I look at what's going on, and what I see is she is out of the car before I can say goodbye to her in the morning. She likes going to school. I go over to my son's school at Plymouth, and kids there like going to school. That's really important. That's success to me. So in addition to the numbers, it's that sort of esoteric feeling-good thing about the schools. We want to feel good about the schools. Because if we feel good about the schools and the schools are a success in terms of how we feel, Stanford would be a successful place overall. So there's more to it than just numbers and how things look on the grid. To me, the schools will be successful when people are banging on the doors to come to Stanford to attend our schools, like my daughter and my son do every morning when they go to school. So it's more than just the numbers, and it's more than just things on a graph. Thank you.
Ms. Murphy, any more to go around? Okay. Well, then switch gears. This question is a financial question, and it goes to Ms. Murphy first. How do you plan to address the post-retirement benefit costs? That's medical and retirement benefits in general.
The way I plan to address it is that it'd be a policy in the city that all these plans should be terminated to the extent permitted under law. We cannot afford these legacy programs. The unfulfilled liability for this, for these plans, we have a city in the DOE plan, is $500 million. They're saying, they're saying it's $300 million, if you do the right, if you did real actuarial assumptions, it's $500 million. We can increase these, because we can do many things in changing the terms of the plan. We could increase, obviously, negotiation, increase contributions drastically. I believe some of these plans can be terminated and should be terminated. We just cannot afford these plans going forward. We're not funding them properly. We're going to have the review this time. The board of reps is considering, or at the end already, amending to acquire faster funding of these plans, the SOFAM plan, and with the fire plan, we'll want to put it on the three and a half percent. We're so far out, I just can't understand. It's going to be as really frightening to me as a resident, what's going to happen here in our Jacksons, but I believe these open plans must be terminated to the extent, and absolutely no participants into these plans. Thank you.
Ms. Heffman.
As everyone knows, we are a collective bargaining state in Connecticut. Our labor agreements have been developed over years of collective bargaining. The post-employment benefits are part of those contracts. It's not something that you can wish away. It's not something that you can with a stroke of a pen eliminate. The best chance you have at the moment is to work as you are renegotiating contracts. Unless there's something that the state legislature thinks that they can do in changing state law, it's very unlikely that at the local level, we're going to be able to have much impact on the people who are already retired and collecting benefits. And I don't even know from a societal aspect if we should be trying to say to people who retired 10 years ago, we are not going to live up to the commitments that we made to you when you retired. We can make substantial progress as we renegotiate contracts as they come up. We did this year, we just finished renegotiating our custodian contract. And for the first time in this city, we have a, part of that contract says that new employees will not be part of the city's defined benefit plan. They will be in a 401(c) or 401(k) or some other means that they will be managing their retirement. That's a first for the city of Stanford, and they can then use it in their negotiation with other union partners.
Ms. Starr, how's post-employment benefits?
I'm going to say that I am actually in agreement with Ms. Heffman of all of the things that she said. I do want to bring up, I am one of those teachers that is retired, and it is not easy with a retirement amount. First of all, we don't, we don't even make the kind of salary with the amount of education that we have to have. In all the years that I was teaching, it was not a high salary. Teachers don't make what they really deserve. And the other thing is, and now I'm going to run into a problem because I am not qualified for Medicare, so I'm going to have to pay into that because they never took it out of my paycheck. So I am concerned about not touching those post-dangs. But the way, the renegotiation, I can understand that because it seems to be the way all the business companies are going.
Mr. Klein.
Full disclosure, my wife Allison is a teacher, so she receives whatever is in the collective bargaining contract. But teachers are not part of the same retirement benefit pool that is being alluded to here. That's a state system that's paid into. But, look, I think each time we negotiate a labor contract, everything has to be on the table for both sides. But I think that we are staid with collective bargaining, we are staid with binding arbitration. And before we just say no, no, no to our employees, we need to think through what the results of some arbitrator in Hartford might be, who might like either the employee side or might like the employer side and impose something on us. So we need to be open-minded, we need to talk about it together. We also need to change the debate a little bit. We need to get away from cutting, taking away from people, and we need to make the case that education and investment in buildings and teachers and personnel cost money, but it ultimately is an investment that pays the best dividend, which is a well-educated workforce and citizenry. So let's get away from the cutting and the slashing, and let's talk about investment and why we need to make the case to the citizenry.
Thank you.
So Mr. Klein and I are in full agreement here. The idea that we can nationally be, have the, have one party's vision be no new taxes and have that be the only purpose and reason for existence, and have the boogeyman be our unions, is really a dangerous and unnecessary precedent. And while I too am a taxpayer and a property owner, the truth is, is that our unions provide a quality of life that isn't extravagant, and we need to manage our bargaining units and our contracts carefully. And I'm proud to say that the Stanford Board of Education bargaining has been much more rigorous than what the city has been able to offer in concessions. So we need to be vigorous in maintaining fiscal responsibility, but we need to be sensitive to the fact that in fact taxes are the privilege we pay for the right to live in the United States of America.
Would there be follow-ups?
Just a second. For a second. I think some members are confused up here. We were just open. That's retiree health benefits, nothing to do with retirement plan that's at the state level. This is at the city level where we're liable for these payments. And we, as a city, as right now, in our Board of Ed and also of the city, we are providing for our active employees, I would call Cadillac health plans, goal-related plans. We really cannot continue these kind of plans, and, oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Any further comments? I am told, okay, Mr. Klein.
You have to balance the notion of making an investment in our kids with holding the line on taxes and being vigorous and watching our contracts. That, that's the art of this. There's no magic. It's an art. You've got to make the investment, withhold the line, and be very careful that some arbitrator in Hartford doesn't impose something on us. So we need to negotiate whether you can get some good faith, put everything on the table.
I am told that 8/15 is the week that we have to be out of here at the stroke. The lights go out. So I don't think we'll have a chance to ask many of your questions, but this one goes first to Ms. Heffman. What is your experience that qualifies you to be on the Board of Education? By the way, I'm going to crack a question.
My experience is that I'm completing my first term on the Board of Education, which was a three-year term. As I stated before, my first year on the board, I was fiscal chair. Second year, I was president of the board. This year, I'm on labor committee and was just appointed to the fiscal committee. I have negotiated, helped negotiate every contract with every bargaining unit that we have over the past three years. Proud to say that we have made some substantial progress in holding the line on costs. I make it my business to try to be as knowledgeable as I can, best practice in the teaching area, so that when I read about new programs, I understand what the impact would be here and how it's delivered across the country. I try to attend education conferences where we get together with other school districts, talk about best practice, what works, what doesn't work. I testify on behalf of the Stanford Public Schools at the state level. I think that my breadth of experience is a benefit to the board. I have the time and the passion to continue doing this work, and that's why I'm running for reelection.
Ms. Carter.
I don't have a vast experience, other than I was a Stanford educator for 38 years. I've been in the schools, I've seen things come, go, happen, and I have a passion for the children of Stanford, and I had a passion for teaching, and it's just a way to give back to the community. Yes, there will be things that I will need to learn, things about budgeting and negotiating and things like that. But as far as like the educational component, I have a pretty good idea of those things because I did teach on all three levels. I've been elementary, middle school, and high school level specialized, and also alternative high school, and I also was an administrative intern for two and a half years. So I've kind of had a good background in the state of public schools.
Mr. Klein.
I'm not a career educator, and I've never sat on the Board of Education. I have lived in Stanford for all 44 years of my life. I'm the only person sitting up there, up here, who currently has kids in our public schools. I see the impact every day of what goes on at government center and how it impacts the classroom. I graduated from Stanford High School. I went to Turner for middle school, which is right over there. Davenport Ridge Elementary School. I graduated from University of Virginia, Charlottesville, Virginia. And I graduated from University of Miami Law School in 1991. I've been practicing law in Stanford for 20 years. I've written several scholarly legal articles that have been published, and I've taught at Fairfield University for several semesters. And probably the most fun thing I've gotten to do is I, year after year, I coach and judge mock trial at the high schools here in Stanford. Actually, tomorrow I'm going to be teaching over at West Hill, of course, on the appellate Supreme Court coming to Stanford next week. So I'm boots on the ground, my kids are in the schools, I'm in the schools, lived here my whole life, and I also have that educational background and the experience as a businessperson and a lawyer to give my all, and hopefully I can have your confidence in your vote. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Ms. Lee.
I am, just by virtue of the fact that I was appointed before I ran in 2008, I am the longest-serving member on the board currently. Before coming onto the board, I spent two solid years going to every committee meeting and to every Board of Education meeting to prepare myself. And even after two solid years of observing, I found that being on the board was much more rigorous, much more demanding than was apparent even while I was sitting there watching the board members. It has been a real labor of love. In order to be a good board member, you need to do your homework. It's about 15, 20 hours a week worth of additional work that you need to do on top of any other job that you may have. In my case, I work for DOMA, so not only do I, am I involved in education as my passion, but I also am involved in education as my profession. I attend, I too attend conferences. Not only do I read the material that's provided for me, but because I'm very interested, I read additional literature and articles, scholarly work, because in fact, not only do I need to understand what's happening here in Stanford, but on the national stage as well.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. Budgets and personnel issues are among the most frequent areas of decision-making by the Board of Education. The issues the board faces are developing three-year budget plans, six-year or maybe longer capital project plans. And my background as an actuary and an attorney and someone who's very qualified on financial issues, I believe I'm one of the most qualified people to help out of the board on these important issues. I think you also should recognize that many of the policies that are made by, that the board has to rule on are dictated by mandates from the state and federal governments, also from our union contracts and other things. And as a lawyer, I think I can be able And as a lawyer, I think I can be able to understand what the constraints are and help develop policy suggestions, other alternatives to the Board to consider in that matter as well. You know, finally, as an actuary, I'm all very familiar with statistics and numbers, and I think I would be able to look at programs and evaluate them, you know, based on the data and not on opinion. I can help in that way. And finally, as the only independent person running on the Board, I think I may, I would leave the most qualified to hold all city officials accountable, as well as the other Board members, in addressing our budgets and also the other budgets that affect our students. Thank you.
I am told we get a time for one more question, and it'll go first to you, Ms. Carter. What influence you're thinking about educational policy?
I really can't think of a specific title. I just think generally, many things that you read, you just pick up portions of certain books, and you remember certain things, and all of those things combined together are what kind of give you your educational ideas.
Ms. Carter? Mr. Klein?
There was no question that came right to mind. My wife's looking at me like I'm crazy, but it comes right to mind, Simple Justice. If you haven't read it, it's a very thick book. It's required reading in most law schools. It's about the counties that were involved in the Brown versus Court of Education decision. And it's a nonfiction book which highlights the struggle in the, I believe it's four counties that struggled to come up with a solution if they could until the Supreme Court told them that their solution was not the right solution. It's a wonderful, wonderful book, although it's kind of thick. Great book.
Ms. Wade?
There's a great book that I continue to read and reread. It's called Schools Cannot Do It Alone by Jamie Bulmer. For all of you who actually are, believe that to educate a child requires an entire community, that it is no longer possible for the education, the institution of education to educate while corporations work, while faith-based communities speak to our souls, it is the responsibility of each of us individually and collectively to provide a quality education, to provide enrichment opportunities, to be there in providing support mechanisms. And for any of you who think like me, I highly recommend this book. It was written by a skeptic who then, after several years of believing that in fact, the problem was them and not us, changed his way of thinking. So again, that's Schools Cannot Do It Alone by Jamie Bulmer.
Ms. Wade?
Thank you. As a lawyer, I have read, I read many, many cases on school policies. So we basically, basically reading a number of cases. You know, just even on the ability grouping before I, you know, before I came here, in the last years, I read many cases. Superior Court case, I mean, Supreme Court cases as well as District Court cases, you know, on that challenge issue. So my background would be basing on the policy issues, would be based, I'm reading primarily, my prior experience on case law. Thank you.
For me, it would be Malcolm Gladwell's Outlines. I believe that if we're capable of spending 10,000 hours on something, as he believes that we are going to be the best we can be at. Smart is not what we are, it's what we become from working hard. And so I would suggest, if you haven't read it, that you do. And it's something that I say to the students that I come across on every visit that I make to a school. You're not poor, smart. You have to work really hard at it, and if you're willing to put in the time, you'll get there.
Do you wish to add? I just like, I just plug for a book, but it is not an educational. This is probably the best book I ever read in my life, and I do not want to read it. It wasn't something that I thought I'd be interested in, and it was like basic. Called Unbroken by Laura Hildbrand, and it's just about human perseverance, and it is the most tremendous book that I've ever read in my entire life.
I am going to give you one more question, yes or no answer? Yes or no answer? Should the size of the Board of Education be expanded or reduced? Expanding, expand. Or education be expanded?
No.
No. No. Definitely no. Come on. All right. I'm sorry if your questions did not get asked. Thank you very much. Okay.